I would like to call to order the City of Dunellen City Council Meeting of January 9th, 2023. It is now 5:31 PM. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the true republic which sustains, one nation, under God, and in the best of justice and fairness.
Before we sit down, just everyone in the attending that would like to come up to the podium and give either a short prayer or any words of encouragement or wisdom. If not, then let's just have 10, 15 seconds of silent meditation. Thank you very much. As you all probably have noticed, Ms. Odom is not here tonight. And Michelle Leonard will very well take her place. So Ms. Leonard, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Mayor White?
Present.
Vice Mayor Dunn?
Here.
Councilperson Mendomsoe?
Here.
Councilwoman Covich?
Present.
Troy Slattery, Public Works Manager?
Here.
Jan Smith, Finance Officer?
Here.
Georgina Sid, Community Development Manager?
Here.
Julie Dinowski, Records Clerk?
Here.
Chief McQuaid?
Here.
Lieutenant Goff?
Here.
And Andrew Hand, City Attorney?
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and City Hall Bulletin Board on Thursday, January 5th, 2023.
Thank you, Ms. Leonard. Before we get started, as I always do, just to give a couple housekeeping tips on how we conduct our business. This is a actual meeting, council meeting, and at a council meeting, votes are taken that count. This is where council off of the workshop of last week is put together an agenda, and we take votes tonight on things that will count. We also discuss new things. Before we get into the public comments section of the meeting, this is time for me to remind you of a few things. Number one, if you have a ringing device, a phone, cellphone or something, it's a good time to make sure it's turned off. The acoustics in this room are actually quite good, so if you are whispering to your neighbor, more than likely, we can hear that. If you want to speak, we really want to hear what you have to speak. I think council, this council is very into hearing what you have to say. If you sign up, you'll be the first to be able to speak. If you haven't signed up, we will still hold the room and see if anyone wants to speak that did not sign up. One of the main differences between the meeting, which is tonight, and a workshop is you have several opportunities to speak. We can start off the meeting, and you can speak to something that's not on the agenda. That's when it's your opportunity to just bring up something new, something old, something that needs to be re-adressed. At that time is when you do it. If something is on the agenda that you want to speak to, wait till that agenda item comes up, and at that time, you can speak to the agenda item before council takes a vote or discusses it. I do want to say that if you do speak, please be reminded that everything you say is being recorded. It's going on a permanent record that someone six months, a year, possibly five years from now can retrieve. So think about what you're saying. Say what you want to say with the idea that it may be something you will have to answer to in the future on its accuracy, tone, or whatever. We do expect anyone to speak who addresses the council to be respectful. I promise you, we will be respectful in return. One last thing is please speak into the microphone. Speak loudly so it can be recorded. Also, if you do come up and speak, please give us your name and address so we can always know who said what it is that's being recorded. So with that said, we will start our process of working through this agenda. Council, we had a wonderful workshop last week. The tone and the businesslike manner we went through was outstanding. I would love to duplicate it. One thing I do want to tell council, one thing I noticed in listening to the meeting last that we had, the council workshop, is sometimes these microphones are turned on before and sometimes after the meeting for 15, 30 seconds. So be careful what you're saying in these microphones because some comments did or recorded. And I would like to say to staff also, when I re-listen to the recordings, sometimes whisperings between staff members are being picked up on the microphone. So what you think no one's hearing, we might not hear it, but the microphone's picking it up and it's being recorded. Okay? All right. With that said, we will begin. Do we have any council comments on anything that's on this agenda? Okay, no comments. Comments from council on it? Go to the public comments on non-agenda items. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to something that's not on this agenda, this is the time to do it. Ms. Leonard, do we have anybody signed up on a non-agenda item?
No, sir, I don't.
Do we have anybody on Zoom?
No, sir, I do not.
Is there anyone in attendance that has not signed up that would like to speak to something that's not on the agenda? Yes, sir, please.
Well, I was going to speak about...
Just go up.
You want to be up here?
What's your question?
I was going to speak on the boat ramp.
On the boat ramp?
Yes.
Is that the toll, the fees, or just...
The fees and the overall operation and implementation based on what you said in the workshop.
I think the time to speak on that would be...
Public comments?
Would that be appropriate to speak to that when we come to that agenda? I don't know if it's up for a vote or not.
The ordinance is on the agenda.
Okay, so you're good. Just wait till it comes up. Okay, very good. Anyone else that's not signed up, would you like to speak to a non-agenda item? And thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. Okay, please note that the public has been offered an opportunity to speak. We now go to the consent agenda. The first two items on the agenda are the consent agenda. That's the city council members and the authorization for the Kimley Horn IPO 104 collection project. These things have been pre-discussed and pre-approved by council from the workshop. They are something that council has already agreed to by consensus. We are to approve. Does the public have any comment on either item number one or number two? Yes, Mr. Bev.
I have a comment on the BMAP program.
On number two?
Yes.
Please come on up.
Bill Bev, 9552, Southwest 192nd Court Room. Just a little background on the BMAP. This has been going on a very long time. It's an extremely controversial program. In fact, there's a legal action now in the court of the San Jose River over the BMAP program because it's widely reviewed. It's been discredited, I would say, pretty much. However, there is a lot of money for projects, which I hope that no one can take advantage of. I have one, we'll think I want to show you. Kenny, you're crawling around. The issue, and you probably know, most of you probably know this, the issue with BMAP is the standard that was set by the federal government, and this came about as a result of federal government challenge because of New Jersey, of New Jersey. I just left New Jersey. Because the rules in Florida had led to lack of enforcement of water quality, which led to the impairment of a lot of the Florida springs. So the federal government stepped in, and they said, "State of Florida, you have to do something." And that's how BMAP came about. So the standard that was set, without really any experience or any anecdotal, beyond anecdotal data, was .35 milligrams per liter of nitrogen. And so far, with all the BMAP programs and all the millions of dollars that have been spent on BMAP, not one spring has come even close to .35. In fact, not one spring is actually even lower than nitrate in the springs. So although it's a great idea, it really has not been successful, but it does provide an opportunity for municipalities like Dunellen to do projects. And just, and I haven't seen the list of projects for Dunellen. I know you have. I would think from RRC's point of view, getting rid of the septic tanks on the Grandville River is a very high, perhaps the highest priority. And this is already happening on the east side of the river, which RRC was involved in that. It has not been done on the west side of the river. And I'm not sure about Kimley Horn's role in this, but so far FGUA has been doing this and been doing a good job of it. They have the expertise, and they have actually, they've been going on the east side of the river, they actually did that. They're doing the project in the run part, but that's not my role to make a recommendation who should be doing it. I just want to let you know that FGUA has been doing this, and they do have the expertise. But as far as we're concerned, getting the septic salt of the river is probably the highest priority, I would say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bev. Anyone else in attendance that would like to speak to the consent agenda? McQuaid, please make note that we did have one speaker, and now we move to vote to council. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Pardon? I'd like a motion.
Second?
Yes, it's already been discussed, so if there's nothing to discuss, right? So all in favor?
Right.
Consent agenda passes unanimously. That means number one and number two has been passed, and now we are number three. We are now at number three, a discussion of the litter task force. Chief McQuaid, welcome. Come on up and tell us all about it.
I have a distinct guest with me. This is Lacy Gladmore. She is the supervisor of the litter control for Marion County, and we just spent a lot of time together on the litter task force. So I would like to start off by saying I do appreciate Commissioner Curry asking me to be part of the litter task force. This hasn't been done before, and we got a lot of confidence. In case you're wondering, I'm the best-looking guy, fourth from the line. So next slide, there we go. What we'd like, what the mission was to enlist the entire community in an effort to eradicate litter and illegal dumping. Change the mindset and behavior of those that live, work, and play within Marion County, emphasizing that littering will not be tolerated. Improve the quality of life for all citizens, provide an effective and physically efficient litter program focusing on prevention. And we really did focus on the prevention. Protect the county's natural resources and protect a clean, viable community for our visitors, and we do have a lot of visitors. Our goal, simple, litter prevention through education and training, community outreach. Our goal should be, outcome should be less litter and physically efficient and effective litter program. What makes this different? This was a comprehensive, community-wide effort to eradicate litter within the county. The focus of this campaign is on prevention and not just clearing of litter from our roadways, cleaning all litter from the roadways. The task force included multiple disciplines within Marion County to promote the program. All of the constitutional officers were involved and support the effort, and the litter task force was facilitated by the county commissioner, Commissioner Curry. The most common types of litter? Commercial, as people dump their tires and stuff, things like this. Or we had the other day, somebody went out in the forest and dumped a whole trailer full of shingles.
It was over 11 tons.
11 tons of shingles on the side of the road. Personal dumping, construction debris, and furniture. People throwing trash from their vehicles onto the roadway, the beams, litter blowing out of vehicles, trucks, particularly near landfills and recycling. I did have a gentleman come by and indicate that there was a lot of litter near the litter here in Dunellen area. So who has the authority? Who? Marion County Sheriff's Office, the Oakdale Police Department, the Melville Police Department, the Dunellen Police Department, Florida Fish and Wildlife, Florida Highway Patrol, Marion County Solid Waste, and we'll get into that a little more in a few minutes, and the Marion County Growth Services. Andrew come up with a very, with an ordinance, called our littering ordinance, which mirrors Marion County. And the one that I wanted to particular, it was a $50 fine when we started the task force, but now it is a $150 fine for the first time. And if you'll see that, that's H, right there. Stings the pocket a little bit if you throw something out. Recommendations? Utilize our surveillance camera as an additional means of enforcement. What that means is if we suspect, if we suspect somebody here in Dunellen, and we can't see or they have no names or anything on the debris, I'll be more than happy to put up some cameras to see if we can catch them. Landscaping the medias, I know some of our Troy and some of our people here, volunteers have done the media to help beautify our city and still the dumping, people out in the garbage to collect. Set up adopt a road efforts, that's pretty easy to do, and ensure all special event permits, including litter control plans. Some of our recommendations. So I know there's more things that's going on, so would you explain what the state attorney and the sheriff is doing, please?
Lacy Gladmore, Marion County Public Affairs. Right now, not only have we been working on marketing and how we're going to implement this litter task force, you know, we built it on the front half, now we actually have to put it into action. We are working with the sheriff department attorney, also with the state attorney, to come up with a civil citation that can be used across the board. And we're also, they're working to provide a training. So they're working and putting a training together, which makes sense, and then they will sit down with the law enforcement and people who can implement the litter task force and the new ordinance and resolutions. So that training is hopefully going to be somewhere in the March timeframe, so everything is in the building process now. So that's where we're at moving forward.
Questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Kenny? Yes, Ms. Kenny? The floor is yours.
I was wondering, do you have any kind of program going on in the public schools, especially the elementary and middle school?
So that is part of our marketing and our education outreach, and the schools are involved. They have been involved in this litter task force since day one, and they are implementing, and we are moving into the schools. I know we ordered litter bags that we can start getting out to kids, you know, like your high school kids to put in their vehicles, and then they're looking at what other campaigns that we can put into the school board and then.
Thank you. Great idea, putting the litter bags in the teenagers' vehicles.
Anything else?
Thanks. I'm good.
Yes?
Yeah, I want to thank you for coming out to talk about this because litter is near and dear to my heart. You talked about developing training that's going to roll out. I think I missed, who is that training going to be aimed at?
So it's going to be aimed at the people who are going to be implementing the civil infractions to the citizens or to the littering. So your law enforcement, your growth services, your code enforcement. So we have the Marion County Sheriff Department attorney and then our state attorney that are working on putting that together.
See, the problem we're having right now, we have different citations. So what this committee is doing is going to put up, we'll get one citation that we all can use, and the penalties with all will be on this citation.
Great, and what are the timeframes for that action?
So they're hoping to have it done by March.
I heard you mention placing cameras when you're really maybe not sure who the offender is. Who would alert you to place those cameras?
Anybody.
Okay, so that would be a message to the public?
Somebody's dumping here, we'll go put cameras and see if we can catch it.
Great. I was happy to see some of the recommendations slides with things like adopt a highway or roadway, for you to say that that's pretty simple. I know people, there's some members on the beautification committee and other people in the city who are really interested in partnering and being an active part of this. So I hope that you'll keep me posted so that I can certainly help connect those people so that we can be taking action in the coming months.
Once the volunteers come together, as a matter of fact, they called one time and they counseled me. So once you get a group of people together, we can come back and tell them what their role could be, whatever. So it's...
That's great, and I know that they also have some ideas about how to get other people involved from the community, so thank you very much.
Thanks, ma'am.
No, I'm good. Good.
Just want to reiterate, thank you and welcome to Dunellen.
Thank you.
Glad to have you come. Couple comments. I heard the figure once before from Commissioner Curry, how expensive it is to pick up the litter that's been thrown on the road. Can you throw that number back out again?
And it's a little over $933,000.
Pushing, pushing a million dollars picking up trash. Is there any differentiation between littering and dumping in your enforcement? In other words, if someone throws a Burger King package out the window compared to someone backing up a sofa on the side of the road and dumping a sofa, is the fine the same? Just a question.
It can't be the fine the same, but if it's commercial, it can go into criminal charges.
Okay.
Like if we can test this, got all the tons of stuff that goes into, goes by pounds, if I'm correct?
Yes.
Yes, by pounds. How much they dump by pounds? If he isn't, he or she is in a lot of trouble, we can find out, who actually dumped all those shingles and stuff.
Well, I'm very much in support of it, owning property right outside the city limits. It seems like everybody drinks their beer, eats their food, and soon as they get an open country, out the window it goes. So I would say the most favorite beer right now was Bud Light. People smoking a cigarette called Vantage. So I kind of get an idea of what everybody, everybody's doing by picking up the trash on the side of the road. And it's something if you, if you don't do it once a week, it becomes very noticeable. So it's something you have to keep after, and I support it. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. I'm just going to stay here for a minute.
One thing I'd like to say, chief, before you leave, and the county is aware of this, recently, we did pass an ordinance, a litter ordinance that mirrors Marion County, so we're in lockstep with them. And Commissioner Curry was quite pleased that we stepped up to the plate. Very good. All right, are we finished with number three? Okay, we're moving on to number four. It's a presentation by Kimley Horn and Arden Architecture Preliminary Conceptual Site Plan for the Proposed Police Facility.
I will introduce the engineer from Kimley Horn and who I've known for family for quite a while, Joe Kegway.
Yes, sir. My name's Joe London. I'm an engineer with Kimley Horn. My address is 1700 Southeast 17th Street in Oakdale. And I'm here tonight to give you a summary of what we've done to date regarding the conceptual planning for the Dunellen Police Station. We had our first meeting on November 17th, and we talked about the building footprint size, and we talked about the needs that we had for this property. The site is over on Powell Road at Illinois Street. It's, the lot is 165 feet by 195 feet. It's a perfect rectangle. And we researched the site for zoning and floodplain conditions and soil conditions, and we found out that the zoning classification is RBO, which is residential business office. And the first thing we discovered is that we would need to rezone this property of public to have the police station there. Then secondly, the flood zone, this site is not in the flood zone. Flood zone is pretty close, just across the street to the north and to the northeast. Probably everyone knows where that big retention area is to the east. That's in the flood zone, but this lot is not. Third thing was the soil conditions. We have two different types of soil conditions there, and that's based on the soils maps that we have here for Marion County, and that showed that it's a sandy soil, arroldondo sand, and candler sand. That tells me as an engineer, that's a good sandy soil, it's a good, it's a good site to build on. Okay, that's a good materials. We shouldn't have any foundation issues. The thing that concerns me about the soils, and it's not pointed out in the soils map, the only way we would find out definitely about that, we would have to do geotechnical testing, we'd have to do some borings. But I'm concerned about the seasonal high water table. And I'm concerned about that because when I look at that big retention area there to the east, I've been driving by that property for decades, and there's always water standing in that pond, in that retention area. Even in droughts, there's still water in the bottom, and that's telling me that we've got a perched water table in that area. So that would be my biggest concern about developing this site. And why would I have that concern about this site? Well, we will be required, when we do a site plan to develop the property, we'll be required to do drainage calculations, both for the city of Dunellen and the Southwest County Water Management District. And both of those permitting agencies are going to require that we retain this storm event, called the 100-year 24-hour storm event. And that's the worst theoretical form we have at one time in 100 years. It's about 11 inches of rainfall in one day. So you have to design your retention areas to accommodate that huge rain vent, but you also have to design your ponds where they recover, because then you can have another event in so many days. And if you have a high water table, then recovery's going to be a lot slower. So that, that's one of my biggest concerns about the property. And the only way I can get those answers is to do the geotechnical testing, and that's not part of our scope right now. Okay? So first of all, we had this first meeting on November 21st, and I wrote down the summary of that meeting. I'll try to keep it brief. We talked about a building footprint, and we never came up with an exact size building, but generally, we're thinking about a 500 to 5,000 square foot building. We wanted a separate storage building. We might need both storage area. We wanted the rear part of the property fenced. We needed to research the Dunellen historic area requirements because there might be additional restrictions there. As I mentioned, we were going to need to rezone the property to public from RBO. Parking. Chief said that we needed at least 12 parking spaces as a minimal. Okay? And, and we talked about we might need additional land, and we've learned that the lot to the west is available. That's what came out of the first meeting on November 21st. Out of that meeting, we developed a concept plan. And I sent it to Mandy, so I don't know if she, can you put that on the monitors? I brought some actual hard copies if we need it. Yep, there we go. So there's our conceptual plan, and that, that main rectangle there is the proposed building. North is towards the top of the sheet. Okay? North is towards the top of the sheet, okay? So that north road is Powell Road. And street to the, to the right, or to the east is Illinois Street. And the L-shaped, multi-lined area would be a drainage swell in the northeast corner. And then we have another drainage swell along the south and west edge. So those would be, I, I would envision those swells, I would try to keep them shallow, about two and a half feet deep, because of my concern about that seasonal high water table. That way, we could keep the bottom of the pond several feet above that estimated seasonal high water table. The lighter color is the, is the drive and the parking. You see, we have a driveway on Powell Road, and we have a driveway on Illinois Street. And this particular plan gave us, we've got how many parking spaces we have there? We can count them up real quick.
Count, twelve.
Twelve.
We've got nine, actually, we have twelve parking spaces there, plus the storage parking spaces there, we've got four right there in a row. Those would be covered parking spaces that we could put a boat underneath there or somebody's vehicle. So we've actually got fifteen, we've got nineteen spaces there with this proposed plan. Okay? Now, after we created that plan, we had our second meeting. And that was held on December the fifteenth. And out of that meeting, these are the notes I wrote, that we like the parking in the rear, we've got those three spaces, and then the four covered spaces in the rear. This concept plan has no room for any type of expansion. We talked about the second lot to the west, and that second lot, in my view, I think we're going to need that second lot to accommodate that drainage with this, this much development on that site. As you can see, we're getting into those trees to the south with that swell, and we wouldn't be saving a whole lot of trees. There's a lot of trees along that property line. We could have multiple uses for the second lot. And I was supposed to attend this meeting here tonight, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have, what we've done for you.
Okay, lights on. Okay, Ms. Kovach, this is the order of-
A couple of questions. One is, you just mentioned trees and also the problem with high water table. I'm sure you're aware, but are you putting into the concept that the more trees you put in, the more water they take up and assist with drainage?
Yeah, we're, we're aware of that, and that, I didn't mention that, that's a great point you brought up. We envision landscaping this site pretty heavily. Along the, along Powell and Illinois, we were planning on planting quite a few trees and so forth in that area too. Because this is a historic area, it's got a lot of residential character, we wanted the building to have a residential look, and we wanted that landscaping to really dress up this site. So, yes, ma'am, we were definitely, that's an important issue.
Second question I have is, the geotechnical study that you mentioned, the necessity of it, will that determine the amount of fill and so on that will have to be added to the site?
That-
I'm talking about the elevation of the building?
Yeah, the, that's a separate, separate issue.
That's a separate issue.
When we do a formal site plan, it will consist of probably around two different sheets, and, and one of those sheets would be a grading plan. And that grading plan is going to show the existing contours of the land, existing elevations. That site's pretty flat, but it also shows the proposed elevations. The elevation of the building, the elevation of the sidewalks, the elevation of the parking lot, the elevation of the dumpster pad, the elevation of the ponds, any inlets and storm piping, all of that would be shown on that, on that grading plan.
Right.
Which will be just one sheet of, of like ten sheets.
Okay, then my question number three would be, then is the geotechnical study required? Or is this something your, Kim Lee Horn is opting to do?
It's, it's required by code, that we do a drainage analysis. And, and in that drainage analysis, we, we are required to have this geotechnical testing done, because we're not just guessing that, oh, we think the permeability of this soil is, is X.
Yeah.
We actually, we actually have that information-
When you do the borings, right?
The borings actually, we have those tests done, and, and this drainage, we call it a drainage report, actually. It, it's probably a half inch thick before it's finished, but it, it gives you the entire analysis. We run these different storm events. The biggest one is this hundred-year twenty-four-hour storm event, and we run it and show the peak states of the water, how hot does the water get in our ponds, and how fast it recovers. And, and that report has to be submitted to both the city and the Water Management District, and they'll come back with comments, and we have to respond to the comments. And I, as the engineer, have to sign and seal that report, strictly my reputation online, that this system is going to work. There's also something else. Those ponds were required to have freeboard. And what do I mean by freeboard? Well, the top of the pond is at some elevation, let's say a hundred. We have the hundred-year storm event, we have the big rain. What's the highest elevation of that water in the pond? It's, it can only be ninety-nine and a half. You have to have six inches of freeboard in your, in your calculations.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Mendoka?
I don't have anything, no, thank you.
No question. Vice, ma'am?
You're right, that drainage pond on that Powell Road always holds more. Certain times of the year, it holds more than the other. I had not thought about the fact that this piece of property always looks flat, it looks like it doesn't hold water and all that kind of stuff. I guess the question I've got is, with these proposed swells, how deep are these going to be?
I'm thinking two and a half feet is what I'm envisioning. So you're actually only going to get, with the six inches of freeboard-
Right.
You're only getting two feet of actual-
Right.
Okay?
Right.
And, and the reason I'm keeping them shallow is because of what you and I both see, and that's that pond just down the street. I mean, I have driven by that pond for thirty years. And I, there's always water in there, even in a drought.
Oh, yeah.
And, and we're concerned about the estimated seasonal high water table. When's that? Well, think about it, when does it rain around here, in the summer? So about August and September, that's when your seasonal high water table's going to be at its highest point, because it's been raining all summer, and, and it's, it does fluctuate, and that's when it's at its highest point.
Sure.
So that's why we, we have to design for the worst condition.
Is there any, and, and I don't see it, and I'm not sure you would do this, but, all right, if you go from Powell Road down to that retainer, there's a house that sits right down in Illinois on Powell, to the east of that.
Just, you can see it right there in the picture, see it, just to the right-hand side?
Yeah, okay.
That's a house, yeah.
Is there any way to get this water into that retainer pond? I mean, you've got a house between us, so unless you went down the road.
I'd have to take it down the right way.
Right.
And, and, you know, I haven't researched that, but I think that's an FDOT pond. So if we started taking any drainage to that pond, now we're going to get DOT involved.
Sure. And the other thing I was going to say, I know that residential area there, that has a lot of truck park field, I actually met with those people during the last campaign, and they're telling me at certain times of the year, the roads in that truck park flood, even though the drainage pond is straight across the street. And they're very concerned about that. And I guess, I'm leading up to all this, if we figure out a way to get the water there, is it big enough and deep enough to hold all the water that's already going there?
Yeah, what, what we look at is before development and after development.
Sure.
They call it pre-development and post-development, okay? And so, in the pre, it floods to a certain level. When we're finished with this, it's going to flood to a lower level, because we're going to be holding back-
Okay.
More than what's going there today.
Okay.
Okay? So, and, 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 and the mobile home people are dead on, here's my flood map. And that, and they're in the flood zone.
They are.
Okay?
I didn't realize that until I went out there and met them.
They are, they're in the flood zone.
Right, right. The only other question I have, the floating, is the building size, I think you said it was around four, five thousand square feet was what was estimated. Is this a one-story building or a two-story building?
This is a one-story building.
Okay.
This, this drawing that you're looking at right here, that building is between forty-five-hundred and forty-six hundred square feet.
Right.
It's sixty-four by seventy and a half.
Okay.
So this was just a, a starting point.
No, I got it, I got it, I'm just, again, trying to understand all this. And, yeah, you squeezed it all in here, pretty much taken all-
It's, it's squeezed in there.
Yes, sir. Okay, that's all.
Thank you.
I remember when council purchased that lot, talked with chief, that singular lot looked huge and gigantic. In fact, talking with the families that owned both the lots together, we were told at that time that both lots could be purchased if we were interested. Council at that time did discuss purchasing both, but felt the one would be sufficient. And that's why we've hired you to do this study, before we go any further, right?
Yes, sir.
So what we're seeing right now, although it is doable, it's like squeezing your foot into a tight shoe. You know, it fits, but it's tight.
I'm really concerned about, when we get into those hard drainage calculations, I'm really concerned if we're going to be able to make, make it work with what, on this size lot.
So the options would be, I mean, go through, go up through, through some of the options, whether they're plausible, or something we'd embrace, or something we'd reject, but ways to get extra space would be to consider a building that's two stories, that doesn't take as much space, that's, that's a consider-
If we could talk about that, the, the thing about a two-story building, now we've got to put in an elevator.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And an elevator is over a hundred thousand dollars. I don't know the exact numbers, but that was a couple of years ago.
Sure.
Okay, so it's, it could be a hundred and fifty thousand. I don't know, it's a lot of money.
Yeah, when you go to, excuse me, if you go to two stories, you're going to get a lot more cost.
I just, and we could actually buy the second lot for less than that, the elevator, right? So, the other thing, consideration is to make the police building smaller. Like I say, I'm not looking at what we like or don't like, I'm just saying, here's, here's the issues, what can we do? One of the things that's been discussed, although a good argument is, why do we need a five thousand, forty-five-hundred, five thousand square foot, foot building for a ten-man police department? Council is dealing with two things. Number one, what we're doing in the present, and what we anticipate in the future. The police building that we're currently using is a hundred years old. It's very likely, if this is constructed properly, it could be the police building for the next fifty to a hundred years. So to build it in such a way that it's so tight, it can't be expanded, or to build it small, that ten, twenty years from now, the building itself is too small. So they're trying to find that number that suffices for what we need now and what we're going to need in the future. The way we have it constructed for financially to do this project is been one that's been pretty much accepted and put the police building project more at ease. What the city has done is originally, and I'll rhyme the numbers off Jan to your, to your irritation, rounding numbers, the city came up with approximately seven hundred thousand from its previous two years, and that is the budget. From that, we have, we will deduct from that seven hundred thousand the expenses that, like for instance, your expense in the purchase of the first lot. The idea is to try to retain enough of that money, so if we ever do get a grant or need a match appropriations, we have the money. So if the council decided they wanted to go forward with this, and they thought the second lot would be the answer, it would, that money would come from the money that's already been taken and set aside. So that's just that much less money we have for a matching grant. That money has been committed. So it wouldn't be like additional money's coming from somewhere. So the whole concept of this police building is, the city has capped its investment. This is what we're going to put into it. For this to go forward somehow, some way, the city has to either get an appropriation or a grant to pick up the difference, and hopefully, we have enough money indicating that if there's a requirement for a twenty percent, thirty percent match, we'd have it. So to go with the second lot, if that's what we figured we'd want to do, it would just simply get into the money that's already been extracted from the previous two years that's set off to the side for the police building project. So it is doable, and I, I think, from what I've heard, the family that owns that other lot has said that it is still for sale, if that's something we want to do. So what council really has to do is decide, number one, a commitment to a new, new police building, this is a brand-new council, hasn't addressed that yet. Previous council did make a commitment to it, this council possibly needs to make a recommitment to it. And if it is a project that we want to go forward with, trying to keep it on the one lot and try to expand it into the second lot would be a decision that would go with, with a commitment or not. So I'm not sure what the current council, there's three new members, which is a, changes the, the possible tenor of what we want to do. So I think the first question is, you know, is council committed to this? And if we are committed, you know, what's the best approach? So that's what I have to say on that.
Just, could I just add, ma'am, briefly-
Yeah.
That the other commitment that must come from the council is the rezoning of the property.
Right. And I think that's doable. And that, that is part of the process, for sure, yes. Yes. So, you know, really, I, I would, really, council has to, you don't have to decide right now, but you can't go forward until we, I mean, you've gone as far as you can right now until-
I've gone as far as I can.
Right. And we've already made a contract with you for X amount of dollars to do this.
Yes, sir.
And the thing is, once you go to the next phase, if council asks you to continue, and you start to put things together, and then if we decide to change the building or change whatever, you might have to start all over again. And that's just money down the drain, right? So we're kind of, right now, at a point, we need to make a decision, are we committed to this or not? And if we are, what's the best way to go about it? And we don't have to make that decision right here, right now, but it's, it is something, right now, you're, you're pretty much have done what you have done, and there's not much more for you to do until we direct at you, tell you what to do.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, council, unless there's discussion, or you just want to leave it like that, and we'll put her on our next workshop and kick it around and see where to go with that.
If anybody has any questions, give me a call or email, and I'll get back in touch with you.
Sir, we'll take your question. What, what's your question for help?
Excuse me, I just one question, is there money-
Not a statement, just a question. Not a statement, just a question. Just ask a question, what's your question?
Okay, is there money in the budget to demolish the old police department and clean that off? Because if you don't do it, you just got one more action.
Okay, Ms., uh, Jan, could you address that? What we, once we go forward with this project, if we do, what, in essence, what do we do with the current police station?
That's something that council needs to decide. There is no, there are no funds budgeted for demolition of the old building. You all may want to sell it as it is. Um, that's just a discussion. We can amend the budget if you want to demolish it, turn it into a parking lot, we can amend the budget to accomplish that. So you've got flexibility. And do you need to do something this year with it? And, uh, in my opinion, not necessarily. It could wait until next budget year if you wanted to address it then.
Joe, one more question for you. I, I did ask this of you, is even if we had made a hard decision tonight, which we're not, this is still, according to what you said, possibly two years away before a police station could actually be constructed and built.
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah, yeah, let me make, that's a great question. And everybody needs to know, uh, a lot of people come to me and they think, I want something built, so, so next week, can I start construction? Folks, this is a long haul, okay? Okay, we have to do a complete survey, geotechnical testing, uh, get all the plans developed, then you submit it for permitting. This is over a year from the time you turn us loose to start until we get all the approvals and permits, okay? And then you've got to get it built. So it wouldn't surprise me if it was, you know, twenty months to twenty-four months to, to get it built.
It's the building aspect of it. Plus you need a year to get your paperwork together.
No, I'm thinking a year, get it all permitted and a year to build.
Okay, so two years.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, council, any other questions?
I don't have any question, I'd just like to make one comment.
Sure.
Uh, for those of you sitting here, I'd just like you, um, to reflect on what we discussed, uh, some time ago, and that is, we can't simply demolish the current police station and make them homeless. Okay, they have, they have to stay in operation, okay? But remember, once this property becomes a police station, then the current site of the, current police station becomes surplus property to be sold by the city. We do not have to invest in demolishing the old building, we sell it as is.
Good point. Thank you very much. Thank you, council, some very probate and good questions. All right, we, uh, go to item number five, Rob Balmes, welcome, Rob, good to see you again.
Good evening, the mayor and the city council. I'm Rob Balmes, director of the Ocala Marion County Transportation Plan Organization, the TPO. We're at twenty-seven ten East Silver Springs Boulevard in Ocala. Now, the, just for background for some of you that are new, the TPO is a federally designated organization that serves all of Ocala and Marion County. We consist of a governing board of, uh, twelve elected officials from Marion County. And that includes one representative from the city of Danellin, Mayor White's our, your representative, one from the, uh, city of Bellevue, five city of Ocala council and, and mayor, and then five county commissioners, all five. So one of our main areas of responsibility as an organization is to manage and oversee the development of the area's long-range transportation plan. The LRTP in other words. You've got a lot of acronyms in transportation. But the LRTP basically sets a vision, goals, priorities for the projects we want to see funded in Marion County over a twenty or twenty-five-year horizon with credible state dollars. A lot of these projects are on our major roadways, but they also include trail projects, uh, projects that help support like operations, uh, safety, uh, projects like that, capacity new roadways. So we're going to begin a process a year from now of updating our long-range plan. And we'll make a request to come to the city council and probably have a workshop right here in Danellin as well to get feedback from the citizens on what's important for transportation, you know, future projects, future needs. But before we get there, I'm in the process right now of developing a scope of work where we're going to hire a consulting team to support us. And I want to be really proactive in getting feedback upfront with this scope. I reached out to all of our board members and, and Mayor White immediately responded and wanted me to come to you at a workshop or city council to really get some of your big-picture perspectives on, uh, transportation emphasis areas or issues related to community development, growth, that we should incorporate into the scope, so we develop a plan that can be beneficial to everyone in, you know, Ocala and Marion County. So really, today, I just want to solicit some of your thoughts on, you know, what are major areas of emphasis for the city of Danellin and this area of the county that you want to see us look at, you know, today and into the future? Uh, for example, some of my conversations I've had to date involve the importance of downtowns and major employment centers and how we need to improve transportation both within and to and from those areas. Uh, another example, I, I heard from one of our board members, of the importance of gateways, you know, to these, uh, environmental protection. A lot of, uh, major emphasis areas that I want to identify so that we can get a good plan in place. So I just want to turn it back over to you, Mr. Marion, I think just the goal is to have a open discussion and I can take notes on some, some of your thoughts, uh, from city council perspective.
Excellent. Mr. Kovich?
I don't know, um, I might be asking a question that's not pertinent to what you can do for Danellin, but, oh, Cal, I'm sorry, Danellin Highlands has always been an area of contention. And we have roads there that are narrow, there is no drainage along them whatsoever. Um, and there's also the roadway, I think it's St. Patrick's, that goes to the ball field. It is heavily used during, uh, four months of the year. And also you have to remember there are lots there that could be put for sale at a much greater value if we get those roads into far better condition, which would help our fat space. Thank you. I'm going to take an opportunity to collect my ideas and send you an email, thank you.
Yes, that'd be greatly appreciated. Ms. Mack?
I have a couple of comments and I know this, at least I should say, I've heard in the plans, um, that there are a number of expansions of highways coming into Danellin that may be changing. The first one that comes to mind is Highway forty-one going north to, um, Williston. I mean, we've already moved the power lines out, everything was set up and then it just stopped. Um, and I'm going to lead up to something in just a second. So clearly you can see the progress being made to get that expansion done, leased out to Highway forty. Um, I've also heard rumors that, you know, Highway forty coming from Ocala keeps getting four-laned and four-laned and four-laned and now it's up to about cotton plant, I think. And, you know, what is the plan to get it all the way into forty-one or where would it end up? And probably the most important to me, because I live off of Highway forty-four, um, the traffic coming in on four-eighty-four from two-hundred now, at a number of times during the day, um, is horrendous. I sit there at the corner of Hendrix trying to get on the four-eighty-four to get to downtown. And I mean, we need a light or something, I mean, I just sit there sometimes five or ten minutes just waiting for the traffic. And the other thing I've noticed that I don't know if anybody else on council notices, just the traffic downtown where Pennsylvanian Williams come together, I mean, Williams all the way past the bridge going into Citrus County is usually backed up. And then the highway coming in from Mulroney on forty-four, the traffic will back up all the way to Mulroney. And again, going north, um, again, down forty-one from Walmart, that all the way into town is, we've gotten so much traffic now in the center, center of the city. I mean, I kept thinking, well, it's going to take years for anything to happen and it may, but I mean, we've got a traffic problem right now, which backs up every day. And, and, you know, a year ago, I didn't notice it as much, but boy, in the last year and a half, this, to me, has just gotten horrible. Um, and I, and I know there's plans, I heard of plans that, okay, we're going to four-lane forty-four all the way into Danellin and we're going to four-lane forty-one and we're going to do something with forty. You know, how far out in the future is this? And then my biggest concern is if we four-lane all those roads, how are we going to handle the traffic right downtown? We can't handle it now. And that's what I'm, I'm concerned about.
Great feedback. Well, I know Florida Department of Transportation has programmed, reprogrammed US forty-one to be widened from north of Walmart to State Road forty. And they, they have in the plans, I know Troy was involved in a call we had some while back over a year where they do want to have a multi-use trail as well on the roadway for pedestrians and cyclists. And then the long-term plan beyond that is to go to Levy County, the next phase. That, that's in our long-range plan currently. We also developed a congestion management process plan where we've noted that US forty-one, Williams, in Danellin is, is a major congested corridor. And, um, part of that plan is to identify what type of improvements we can make operational, whether it's, you know, adding turn lanes or looking at signal coordination. That, that's something we have, uh, identified as well that we want to continue to emphasize in our planning process. And, and we submit a list of priority projects every year to, to DOT, uh, for improvements that we want to see funded, so appreciate hearing these locations. We'll note these as well when I work with Troy on our upcoming priority projects list. Thank you, guys.
Okay, Vice Mayor? Okay, Rob, um, again, welcome. It's really great to see you. I'd like to bring a couple of things to your attention, because, uh, one of my very first meetings at TPO, when it was announced that the Northern forty-one, which was on, supposed to be scheduled to start in two thousand twenty-three, had been basically delisted off of the five-year program. And I kind of, my jaw dropped to the ground, like, what happened? You know, we're on the precipice of having, uh, forty-one widened going north from Walmart and now you look up and it's announced, you're just dropped off for this for the next five years. I really never got a satisfactory explanation how that could be, other than shortage of money, but, but that means when you say shortage of money, we triage the money for someone else and we don't have anything left over for you. That's what triage, you know, you're short of money. So is there a possibility, as Vice Mayor brought up, that, that forty-one widening from Walmart north could again be within the five-year plan?
It, it was just added. FDOT added it back into the plan for fiscal year two thousand twenty-eight.
Okay, so we're at the end of the five years.
Well, it's back in the plan, but that's important. I think they heard the concerns at the TPO meeting, that the secretary was there when he heard those concerns directly from board members, so it's, it's back in.
For two thousand twenty-eight, so should we break up the confetti and the balloons? Okay, well, at least we, we have a target for two thousand twenty-eight. Another thing I would like to bring to your attention and those that are into this is Danellin is very unique. It's unique in that the city itself is growing, but it's not exploding in comparison to other parts of the county. It's growing, but it's growing kind of at a slow but steady pace. But the surrounding areas immediately around forty-one are exploding, whether it's toward Inverness, whether it's out toward two-hundred, everywhere else. So the curious thing about this and what I'd like to bring to your attention is all the roads that are part of this explosive growth in areas outside the county are feeder roads into Danellin. So even though Danellin is not itself growing and creating its own traffic problems through its growth, it's getting swamped with drive-through traffic from areas that broke this. For instance, all these roads go through or go near Danellin and we get the drive-through traffic. This is people that have no intention of doing anything in Danellin, they're just driving through from point A to point B. So you have forty-one. Forty-one goes, uh, from us to Inverness up to Williston. Forty-one also connects into forty-eight-eight, also into forty. You have two-hundred, which dumps into forty-one. You have forty, which dumps into forty-one and actually goes through the, uh, historic section. You have four-eighty-four and you have four-eight-eight on the riverside, on the citrus side. So all these roads some way, somehow feed bypass traffic in Danellin. And we're, we're getting, we're not getting anything from it other than the traffic. So as other areas are promoting and allowing explosive growth, Danellin's getting the residue of that. So, you know, it's very important to know. And this, this is probably on top of many other reasons why it was so easy for Danellin to be opposed to the northern turnpike extension, because these roads that I just pointed out were all feeder roads into that extension, which would have even made it worse, along with what I'm saying, where everybody'd be driving through Danellin to get to the northern turnpike extension. As far as one particular road I would like to bring to your attention, other than the Northern forty-one, is the peculiarness of forty, which actually is a thoroughfare that goes right through the center of the historic section. We have a historic section with art shops, restaurants, it's supposed to be quaint and whatever. And when you come off of forty-one, cross forty-one, you go through forty, you drive right through the historic section to connect into forty outside of town. We have eighteen-wheelers, we have lumber trucks with freshly cut timber, you name it, it's being taken right through the historic section because that's the, that's the way you connect back into forty. So someone needs to be aware that a major commercial enterprise is going on through a two-lane area with thirty mile an hour speed limit with residents and, and businesses. So somehow, some way in the long-distance future, forty needs to be diverted where it doesn't go through the, uh, city. Last thing I'd like to bring to your attention, if you can just talk to us a little bit, I understand that the, where forty comes into forty-one, uh, north of town, that because of that railroad bridge, you know, big trucks can't get through there. And it's my understanding that there's a plan to make a cloverleaf or something new that bypasses that so trucks can now get, get around that, is that true?
Yes, I, I don't have the details on that, but we're going to have a representative at a technical advisory committee meeting tomorrow. And I'll ask her if she can give us an update on that project and the concept, so that I can pass that on to you all. But I know they've been looking at that area, proceed the operational.
It's my understanding that it's, as you come toward forty-one, you're on forty coming toward forty-one, before you get there, it loops north and then hooks, hooks in. So, um, if we can get an update on that. All these things, like I say, Rob, it impacts the city because we're dealing with the traffic. And I want to let you know, I'm very much enjoying my experience with TPO, I have a lot to learn, there is a lot to learn. But, uh, it's a, it's, it's a great committee to be on and I appreciate it. Okay? Anything else?
I, I would just like to go back to what Mayor Whitehead said about, um, heavy commercial trucks, I'm talking fourteen-wheelers as big as they make them. I've even seen, uh, double trailers, FedExes come through. Is there some way we could solve that problem simply by putting up a sign that says no commercial truck traffic and send them out across Powell Road?
Well, uh...
We also have school there, in fact, there's two schools there. There's the, um, parochial school, we have a middle school, and we have these big lumber trucks, um, trucks carrying lime rock and so on coming through as the school buses are coming through. It's, it's not a good situation at all in terms...
Obviously, on US 41, that's a major arterial that trucks need to access through this area, so, but the, you know, the focus locally on your city facilities and then working with the county would be the way to go.
So just take a look at the map?
Yeah.
Actually, how do you go home? Do you go back on 484?
Well, see, I came down 40 to US 41, because I, I wanted to see that congestion. It is congested, I can tell you that. But I wanted to see that firsthand, if I could.
So 40 is really weird. It, it comes in north of town and stops, and then you gotta come all the way down 41, and then you pick it up in the historic section. So it's actually, it's channeling everything right through the area, that's the, you don't want that kind of traffic going through there. It's, like Ms. Covage says, we're not exaggerating, 18-wheelers. When I see these lumber trucks coming through there that have just lumbered, lumbered before, I'm just, and there's our middle school, yeah, our middle school is right there. It's just, it's really out of character. So take a look at it.
I will do that.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, you came here for information, right?
Yeah, we're giving you some. I appreciate everyone's information today.
Anything else, counsel? Thank you very much. Enjoy the traffic home. Okay, very good, good job. All right, we're at number six, Department Head Reports, and we also have an explanation on a request for the C-2C expedition race, so is, I'll turn this one over to you.
Yes, sir. So Mayor, you were all sent a letter from Mr. Eric Wise of, he is a representative of Off the Grid Racing. I don't know if y'all had a chance to read this. So basically, he's making a request to see if the city would be in agreement to make an exception per our code, Section 4679, on the prohibition of commercial use at Blue Run Park. So I highlighted a few things in the letter that I thought were of importance to point out to you all. The, the AR Premier event is, they're having an event on Thursday, February 23rd, 2023. They're requesting the one-time exception to the ordinance by, and also, if you all approve this, we would have to, of course, get permission from FCT in order to move forward and, and get into an agreement with them, for them to be able to do this. Basically, the event is a 72-hour Florida C-2C for six of it, it's the sixth of its 23 years. It consists of three major disciplines, which are trekking, paddling, biking, and navigating, only using a map and a compass. It sounds amazing, I don't know how they do it. The more I read it, I'm like, I would not. They estimate to have about 175 racers. They're bussed over from St. Augustine, and they start at Bird Creek Beach in Levy County at 10:00 AM on that day. When they get to the Blue Run Park area, they estimate they'll have about four to five boats at one time in about 10-minute waves. Once they're at the boat ramp, staff's gonna assist them in taking the boats and the gear and stowing them on the trailer, and then the teams are urged to leave on foot over to the overflow parking, where they're gonna have their staging. They'll have water, food, and the bikes for the next leg of the race, which is the greenways. They believe the races should start getting to the boat ramp between 6:00 PM and 9:00 PM, not a high-traffic time at all, and wind down around 2:00 AM at the latest. They are saying that staff is gonna ensure there's no backup at the ramp, all boats stowed once they arrive. They will keep in mind of and have paths clear for any day or evening users. The gear is going to be at the Pruitt Trailhead, so that way it'll motivate them to quickly move forward anyway from the. It is not a, there's nothing going on that weekend that I can see, that I've looked into it. It's not a holiday weekend, there's nothing special, it's a Thursday. I don't know that it's a busy day during the week in order for this to happen. So it's up to you. You all decide that you're in agreement, that we would be willing to go ahead and make this exception for this one-time event. I think it would be phenomenal for Dunellen to have all these people coming through our beautiful city, especially since they're going coast to coast, so it's kind of really cool to have us be a stop, I think.
Okay, comment, Ms. Covage?
I think it's awesome, and we need to get publicizing this if we agree to let it happen.
Well, we would, we would definitely, I think, have to let people know that this was coming and it was gonna happen. I mean, we would want to let people know. I mean, they would see something going on at the park either way, so we'd want to let them know.
Okay.
I, I reviewed it, and I think it looks very well organized, and I certainly appreciate the outreach, and I don't have any objections.
Very good. Ms. Mayor?
I don't have any objections at all. The only thing I didn't understand is, apparently, they're gonna start at 10:00 AM, but they're not gonna get to Blue Run Park till 6:00 PM.
Well, that's because they start at Bird Creek Beach in Levy County, and they have all different levels. My understanding is they have stops along the way. I can show you the map, it's, it's.
I mean, well, that was the only thing that just, no, I agree, that the time's 6:00 to 9:00 at night going through Blue Run Park shouldn't be a whole lot of people there on Thursday night. To 2:00 AM, I mean, that's great for them, I guess.
Yeah.
And then picking up at Pruitt Head Trail and going on, I've actually walked a lot of that, so I get it, but no, I think it's great. I just, looking at the hours, wow, that's a long trip.
Yeah, God love them, honey.
No, I don't have any objection, so.
So this is the map, just so you all can see, and they do have checkpoints along the way for their, for their people to be able to stop, and, you know, I'm sure get water and any supplies that they might need. My understanding is that, you know, if you read the letter, it sounds like they're starting groups, but they, they have a tendency to break off a little bit, because they go at different levels.
Right, right.
Thursday, February 23rd.
February 23rd?
Yes, sir.
So this is our January meeting, so basically, we're looking at requests for approval today?
Yeah, well, what we would do is, after today, if you all approve of doing this, then we would have to send it to FCT, because both entities have to agree to allow them to do this in order for an agreement to be in place. Andrew has anything to add?
City's ordinance doesn't provide for exceptions currently. 4679 is cited, but I'm not aware of 4679 provision in the code for an exception, so it's something to take a look at. That being said, I'm not sure that there is necessarily a problem, depending on what the scope that they want to do, given the definition of commercial use, if there are no services actually being provided in the park, and certainly, if it's cleared with FCT, and, you know, the city could take additional, you know, whether there's police officers or something there to make sure that there's not an issue, it may not even be a commercial activity. So that's something to possibly consider. I just don't know enough about it to, you know, provide an opinion this evening, having been just made aware of it. But there isn't a, as I said, there isn't a, a process for exceptions currently.
So the ordinance has written, doesn't have, for instance, like, we have for the music festival, where we have one evening beer sale on the street, so we have nothing in the ordinance that allows a special exception for a one-time event?
No, in order to do so, you'd have to, that was discussed during the process, but it would require a creation of criteria to evaluate that, so that it was administered with criteria.
So based on the ordinance which we recently passed, how could we allow this to, to happen?
Well, if it, as long as it is, as long as it takes place in a way that it wouldn't be considered a commercial activity under the ordinance, and there's not an issue, and that just requires on whether or not services would be provided. And so if you have individuals who are, you know, basically taking care and pulling their own boats up and so forth, if that's what the facts are, I don't see that it's necessarily a commercial use. And if they're not going through the prohibited area with tubes or any other equipment where they cannot, then you don't have an issue there.
Well, this would be very consistent with what we're thinking in the future, as the trails become more and more connected, that you would actually have bicycle clubs and whatever, they have organized biking events where they come through the park. So I, I think the intent of the ordinance was hopefully that we could make certain exemptions for one-time events. I understand the commercial aspect of it. One thing I would suggest to counsel is, if we do approve this, we should require some time between now and the event that a representative from this organization comes and meets staff or one of us at the park, and kind of nails it down exactly what they're doing, exactly how they're going about it, and how it may or may not impact what's currently going on in the park. I would say that would be very important, that someone, someone that represents them comes and takes a look at it and goes over it with us.
I have one more comment, and that is, how is our local emergency services going to be implicated? Because anytime there's an event like this, you need to have a presence, because things
That is a good point. You could have someone who has heat exhaustion, or, and we saw what happened with the football player. So these things do happen. Well, that would be something we'd have to coordinate with the chief, chief and everything. Go ahead.
No, I totally agree with that, but I would think, and this may be something we need to confirm, that the organizers of this are gonna have medical personnel along this trail to help people in distress. I know, I would, well, I don't know of this one, but I used to put on events like this, I did a triathlon, and put on a number of racing events in Birmingham, and we were required to get it approved to have a certain number of, like, quality EMTs and stuff like that onsite, in case somebody, like I say, got overheated or whatever. But again, I would want to make sure that they are going to provide it again, so we don't commercially get involved with having to do something for them. And maybe, again, Bill, like, just back to your point, maybe they need to come help explain some of this.
Yep.
And your, your point is, if there is gonna be an additional expense to it, let's make sure the city's not picking up the tab?
Exactly, exactly. We can't be here liable for.
If I was gonna vote for, for it, I would say yes, contingent upon them coming before the event, and let's meet with us, and let's go over the fine print, make a shot of word.
The letter does indicate that they have a plan to monitor the welfare of all of their participants, so it seems as though they, I felt they were pretty thorough, so I think a meeting beforehand could do the trick.
Okay, so what I, what I would like to do, I'm not gonna make the motion that we do approve this, with the caveat that as soon as possible, one of the representatives needs to come and meet with staff or a member of council and go over it. Can I have a motion to that?
Hold on a second. Do they actually need to come here and meet us, or can we do a video conference?
There are so many little nuances to Blue Run Park, and nooks and crannies and little things, how it connects into the auxiliary trail, how it connects into Pruitt. There's a lot, there's gonna be a lot of moving parts with this. I would, I would like to see some. I know if I was organizing it and counsel was saying, yes, but we'd like to talk to you, I'd be on the next, I'd be on my motorcycle coming over.
I would too, because they're saying some of the slower people aren't gonna get out of order at 2:00 AM.
That's crazy.
No, they, they need to come see this.
Yes.
This is not, I mean, you're talking about coming up to Wood Lake Uche at 2:00 AM, and, you know, we have a few little critters out there that they want to eat them for lunch. And again, I do think it is critical that they really understand, can't just look at the map and say, this is it. No, I agree with that.
That falls within, you know, hey, we need, you need to be here, you need to see it as much as we need to see you.
So you'd like someone to come?
Just one of the things I do want to point out, counsel, if you're taking a vote to make a waiver, there is not a waiver process. So there's currently not a process to allow this to happen if it, you know, results in commercial activity. I did just have a chance to read some of their write-up and what they're proposing, and they are proposing providing services. So I think the way, if you want to make this happen, the way to do it would be either if they change what they plan to do, so no services are provided, or really what would take is a council amendment to the ordinance to allow eco-tourism races or so, you know, some sort of activity to fall into it. The other, one of the things, one of the exceptions within the ordinance is performance of park-related services and activities for the city or other governmental agency as consistent with the Blue Run Park management plan. So if it becomes a city event, and if there's a city partnership and it's approved by FCT, that may be a means too, but, you know, this being as close to the race as it already is, I don't know if that's a possibility, or even something counsel would consider. So that's just, you know, given that Tommy knows that, I do want to make you aware of that.
So are you saying to us you need time to find out if this is a conflict with the commercial activity clauses of the ordinance?
And it does appear to be from what I'm seeing in the write-up, but, you know, this is something that could happen, and the city could allow for activities like this in the future, and there may be even enough time to let it happen, but from what I'm seeing right now, it would take some changes, yes, to allow it to happen.
All right. So would you, time's really tight, I'm surprised they've approached this close to it. Could you have a legal opinion on whether it's allowable?
Could start looking at it immediately. Curse or really looking at it the way it is, with the way it's proposed, I do think it is problematic, per the information that I'm reading over right now, that I had not seen prior to this evening.
So the motion would be to pass it contingent upon Andrew vetting it out?
Well, there's not a process to allow it, it's either allowed already, or it's not allowed.
So we passed it, and it was not allowed, what would happen? I mean, we're not going forward. We pass it, you say, my interpretation is no, how do we stop it?
Well, if you were to, I guess my point is, if, if it's currently allowed, you don't need to take any action. If you decide to go forward and approve it, and it's in violation of the city's ordinance, and that approval becomes in violation, that creates an issue where other regulated, you know, commercial operators and so forth are being not treated the same way as another commercial enterprise, which can result in a very big problem with the ordinance, and that would be problematic.
You're saying the best way is don't address it, just let it roll the way it is?
Well, I think counsel has some options. I think the problem is, is the tightness of the dates, because as I said, certainly, you know, the ordinance could be modified to allow for this kind of activity. Is there enough time to do that? I can't say, it would probably take at least a special meeting, or a meeting, it would probably take some sort of a special meeting. I think even with the amount of time, if you turned the workshop into a meeting, I don't think there'd be enough time in between, between passage, the way that the dates currently fall. I know that those dates are changing, potentially in March, based on another decision tonight, but that wouldn't be in place, so it would take some sort of a special meeting.
So counsel, I'm really surprised some event like this, big time, it's a big-time event, that they're approaching us six weeks before the event, and we have to try to figure this out. They're kind of throwing it on us to figure it out.
Yeah, I just took a gander at the website, which I admittedly had not done before we came here, and this has been, I mean, registration started 10 to 12 months ago. This has been, I mean, registration started 10 to 12 months ago. So the planning of this event and the, just the registration fees involved, then it's maybe bigger than I envisioned it being through just reading the letter. So I.
Well, when you're talking about 175 participants, that's, and this is going to take days to go across the state. Yeah, I would think this, I mean, place for, I'm like you, Bill, why did they wait this long? But, you know, on the, on the other side, I think, I think Andrew's right on the point. If we open this up for commercial use, other people who have been discouraged from, because of our approach on commercial use, I think will find a way to attack this. Unless there's a way, and I don't know, that we could make this an exception for an event for these people that want to just come in here every weekend and call it an event. No, that's not what this is. This is a one-time, once-a-year event. If there's, we can word it to get to that exception. If we can't, I don't know if we can do it.
Certainly could with plenty of time, obviously, for next year. This is an annual race.
But I'm like you, why didn't they contact us a year ago?
Well, yeah. Vice mayor, one of the mantras that this new council is creating, and I really appreciate it, is don't make decisions until we have the information. And this is a perfect, this is a perfect example of old business that you have, you're sitting here right now because of this, that this council gets something thrown on it and you really don't, and if you take it. So I would say, with what I'm hearing now, if we would vote to approve this, we're actually afraid of a problem. I expect some resignation letters. You're already breaking your campaign promise, you know?
No, I get it. But I guess what I'm trying to get to is, I think maybe what my thought, to have Andrew spend some time the rest of January, or if possible, and see if it is plausible to have an exception for a, a one-time event to use the park. Does everybody agree with that? And it includes, I know the group you work with, Bill, to get all this done. I mean, if we're going to have problems with, and they aren't going to sign off on it. I mean, they may not sign off on it either, and if they do, it's pretty much a dead deal. But if there's a way to resist, because I'm like you, Bill, the way they tied these trails together on the bikes, and now with kayaks and boats and everything else, these events are going to come up. And if there is no exception, then there is no exception, guys. I'm sorry, you can't use the park. But if there is, you know, that'd be great. The other solution I would tell this group is if we can't approve this, you need to call the state of Florida, Rainbow River State Park, and see if you can pull out there and go through their park.
You could possibly use the city ramp too. The only thing I'm really struggling with is, this is a great idea, I want to go with it, but I don't like the idea that, you kind of sealed it for me when you said they, this has been advertised for eight or nine months and we're just now hearing about it now.
Yeah, it says we're working with federal, state, county, and city level, so maybe there's even, I suppose we hadn't heard from other municipalities.
I'm going to say it because it's going through state office thing too, so they got to feel.
So Michelle, basically, you seem to be more versed on it. If they were explained that we can't do this with this short notice, but we do give you the option of using the city ramp, at least we're, we're throwing them a lifeline.
We can let them know.
And then we can address maybe in the future what we want to do with.
Yeah, because they can take out there.
Everybody in a.
Yeah, and even talking to them about what contingency planning have you made? Maybe they can explain to us what contingency plans, and maybe we could accommodate something a little different.
Where do they need to come talk to?
So, yeah, you would expect, they had to have a, someone had to say, what are we going to do if then no one says no? You'd have to think they have Plan B.
I would suspect.
Right? All right, counsel, so I would say maybe the best thing to do is just take no action.
And if the letter asks, Eric asks that you call him.
We will, we'll reach out to him.
Super, for sure.
Very good, that's the way you do it.
All right. One more thing before I will.
Yeah, you have counsel, this is.
This is department heads, yeah. So counsel, at your workshop, you discussed bringing back some dates for some special meetings. You have two topics that you would like to have special meetings on. One is the council goals and objectives, and the other is the vacation rental ordinance. So I spoke with the mayor earlier today, and we are proposing a special workshop for the council goals and objectives on Wednesday, January 18th, and then a special workshop to discuss the vacation rental ordinance on Wednesday, January 25th. And they would be held at the regular 5:30 time. No?
I have to, I have to check availability. I don't, I don't know if I have anybody available, the dates are like an attempt currently.
Okay. Could you repeat that, the dates again and times?
Wednesday, January 18th for the council goals and objectives, and Wednesday, January 25th for the special meeting for the vacation rental ordinance.
Reasonably put the STR second.
5:30.
5:30.
We put the STR second to allow those that are concerned about that enough time to prepare.
Sure.
And if those dates don't work, we can certainly look at dates in February.
The 18th works for me. The 25th, I am reporting with a doctor in Orlando at 4:00, and I don't know whether I can get back here by 5:30. I could get here late, but like, that's the only conflict I have.
It's not on Wednesday, it, it could be on any day.
Could be any day.
Thursday.
Yeah, that's the only day I have something. It's the only.
The only thing about putting the STR on a unusual day, I don't want to do anything that gives anybody a reason to say, well, you had it on a Tuesday and I wasn't expecting.
We could certainly look at Monday, the 23rd.
Yeah, that works. Like I said, the only day I have something, I have to be in Orlando.
Everybody good with those two dates? Are you?
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Speak your pace.
It's the only day I didn't bring my calendar to consult my other, my, my schedule, but I'll, I'll go with it.
Well, counsel, of course, Mendoza, the attorney has to get back with us anyways. So if there are conflicts.
Okay. It does make a meeting a week, every week this month, so it's, I just want to make sure.
A lot of work to do.
No kidding.
Put those states down and see. Okay, we're still on department head reports.
All right, I'm going to hand it over to Jan. I am good. Troy?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Counsel, I got a couple of short updates here. One, Councilwoman Coates, you asked me to give an update on the blueway signs. We are ready to move forward with it. We do have a pending permit with the county, and we have to redo our locate request to get the signs put in. When the emails took a dump, so did our request on the locates. So by the end of the week, we should be moving forward and completing that up. I got a phone call last week from Donella Littleley, the new manager out there, Tim, said that the county has finished up redoing their irrigation and water lines as, as they needed to be done, and I'll be meeting with him hopefully this week just to go out and verify that it was done to his likings. He wanted to go over a few other things with me, but the county has done quite a bit of work out there, so I'll try to get you an updated report. And then last but not least, counsel, I want to take just a minute and clear up a, a record of a statement that I made during the December 21st council meeting regarding the permitting for the project at the city beach, the pavilions. Mandy and I went over it. That part of my statement that evening included me stating that we needed to sign an affidavit that would potentially eliminate our ability to charge fees out there and stuff. It was after the meeting that I realized or was informed, we are not required to sign that affidavit as a city or municipality, an employee of a city or municipality can pull a permit without meeting that requirement. So I wanted to make that clear, but also Mandy had sent out an email a couple of days ago or last week, clearing that up for you as well. So if you have any questions about that, please ask, but I would like to set the record straight that I spoke wrong about that document, but at the time, that was the information I had available too. Thank you. That is it for my department updates for now.
Georgina? Yes. Hi, how are you? I have, for planning and zoning, I have 25 total permits issued for the month of, month of December. I have one special events permit, and that was the Brae. I have five commercial permits and 19 residential out of those 25. And then there were five new businesses. I know that you guys have been hearing about new businesses in town, but we don't have deals yet, so I won't be bringing those in front of you. It will have to be in the February meeting. And then as far as code enforcement, the new code enforcement officer has been working. He started on the 14th, so about 15 days into his work, he's already done 14 new cases, ranging from nuisance properties to derelict vehicles. The 11 cases that were pending as far as his research from 2022, five of them are now closed, and the other ones he's working on. He also worked on a notice that we, that we have already sent to FGUA to add to their billing cycle, which is going to be focusing on house numbers and the importance of that, and advising people that we are going to be cracking down on that, making sure that, that everyone has a house number to their property. It is important, and we are also going to be putting it on the website and every other outlet of information that we have available, along with a letter from our chief that basically is concurring with us on the importance of this. So that's coming up. As far as, and I know this is the next item, if you want, I can just pause and continue, but the next item is the planning commission appointments. And do you want me to just keep going?
I would wait. We can just give them an update during that. We still have chief.
Chief.
Okay, so that would be.
Let's get through all that. Chief, do you have anything? Oh, he's gone.
He's gone. Do you have anything, Shane? All right, then we're good.
Okay, so we're done with the department head reports? Okay, for those of you following, we're going to take care of number seven. There's actually two items, two items within number seven, planning commission appointments. So Ms. Leonard, do you happen to, can you repeat the, the names of the two individuals?
Yes, sir. We have applicant Rex Lehman and Sam Martian. And I'll let Georgina go ahead and introduce this for you since it's coming from the planning.
These are both for a full appointment to the commission, right, that alternate?
Georgina's going to explain that for you, yes.
Yes, that, that is a particular, we're going to explain that we are going to have two vacant seats for full members, as Mr. Pierpont will not be renewing when the renewal process comes, comes up this coming month. So that would be a special note, full member position, and then we have a vacant one already. So you are certainly welcome to appoint them for those full member positions. And then we will have one alternate position available for whoever wants to apply for these positions.
Does that leave Ms. Sheffield then in an alternate position?
Ms. Sheffield is in an alternate, and she's the first alternate for the planning board. So it would, it would, the available position would be the second alternate for the planning board.
Okay, counsel, before we take care of this business, I have a quick question for Andrew. Andrew, if Mr. Pierpont had decided that he wanted to continue for another term, would that have to be reapproved by counsel, or would it be automatic by him just simply saying he would like to go for another term?
From my understanding of the situation, no, reappointments need to be done by counsel. So it's an expiration, and that's a reappointment that's made.
It's not, it's not automatic. He would have to come back with the request for another term. Similar to being sworn in for your second term, right? You have to go through the process again, right?
Yes, and in this case, even a bit more so, counsel approves, it's almost going through the voting process, just via counsel and appointment process as opposed to a general election. So, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
And just for your information, he advised that, that he wasn't considering renewing.
So he, he's, so we don't have to make that decision? Okay. Thank you very much. All right, let's get down to business. We're going to go with Mr. Lehman first. Can I have a motion to appoint Mr. Rex Lehman as a full member to the planning commission?
Sir, I'm sorry, if I could just interject for one second? Just so you all know, Mr. Martian's application was received December 19th of 2022, and Mr. Lehman's application was received January 4th of 2023. So in considering the vote, you may want to take into consideration the application which was received first or second, since they are both qualified.
Okay, is there any difference considering both of them will be on the planning commission at the same time?
Whoever takes the expiring term of Mr. Pierpont will not take their full-term seat until either Mr. Pierpont steps down, or he is voted to be removed by the board, or his term expires, which is February of 2023. So they would be an alternate until Mr. Pierpont is no longer a full member.
All right, so whoever is voted in first would take the seat immediately, and whoever's voted in second would wait until, okay. So I would think, counsel, with your approval, this is kind of like a point, how do you decide that one? I'd say whoever put in their application first should be the one that's, takes the full seat, and I understand that's.
That's Mr. Martian.
Mr. Marshall, okay. So let me start my motion over. We never made it, so we can go through it.
Mayor, I may have missed it, but this does require public comment.
This does?
Yes.
Each, each one?
Yes, that would be the best way to go about it. You could take public comment on the entire item for both, but it would be best to take public comment prior to each motion.
Okay. There is going to be a motion to approve Mr. Marshall as a member, full member of the planning commission. Is there any public comment on that? Okay, no public comment? Any discussion? All right, can we have a motion? I guess a motion should have come first. We have a motion to approve Sam Marshall as a full member of the planning commission for a three-year term effective January 9th, 2023 to January 9th, 2026. Do I have a motion?
Go move it.
Have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Ours passes unanimously. Congratulations, Sam, wherever you're at. All right. I'm going to be interested in talking to you on January 9th, 2026, and see how you feel of your experience. All right, the second individual, Rex Lehman. We need a motion to approve Rex Lehman as an alternate member to the planning commission for a three-year term effective January 9th.
Sir, the motion could be to fulfill the expiring term of John Pierpont.
So this, the way this is, is not quite right, because he's.
Correct. We did not know until today that Mr. Pierpont was not intending on continuing due to his employment.
So the motion would be that Mr. Marsh, Mr. Lehman. So the motion would be that Mr. Marsh, Mr. Lehman is appointed as a full planning commission member to be the alternate, be the alternate until Mr. Lehman...
He would be the full alternate member to the planning commission for a three-year term to fulfill the expiring term of John Pierpont.
Okay, does he become an automatic full member after that?
As soon as he fills the expiring term, yes, sir.
Mr., this sounds a little not quite...
That, that could be done that way, but the way it's been typically done in the past, at least the way that I've seen it done, is you just simply appoint the commission member to the alternate seat, and then when the other seat is about to become vacant, then take another vote at that time to move that person over, rather than essentially doing two things at once.
And that's what we did with this end open, too. We swore her in again after she had served two, two or three months.
Exactly.
Okay, so the motion is, thank you. I need a motion to approve Rex Lehman to fulfill the remaining time of Mr. Pierpont, Pierpont. That's basically it.
I'm sorry, Mayor, Mr. Pierpont is still a member? So the best way to handle this would be simply to fill the vacant seat and then take action at the next meeting to address Mr. Pierpont's departure from the planning board.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'm not going to repeat it again. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Mr. Rex Lehman to the vacant alternate seat till such time as Mr. Pierpont's seat expires.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Did we include public comment? So is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment on this? No public comment? Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Congratulations. See you. Okay, we're moving to number eight. I just let counsel, and when we discussed the boat ramp, launch fee, previously, we spent 38 minutes talking about that. So that's an example of how we can get bogged down on something that really extends the council meeting. All right, we have the first reading of ordinance 2022-12 for boat ramp launch fee. Mr. Hand, would you just like to give a brief summary, and then the public would know what to comment on?
Yes, I'd be happy to, Mayor. So this ordinance is the ordinance that council requested to implement the possibility or to authorize a launch fee system coming into play. It doesn't have the details, it has to be handled contractually, and certainly anything else that needs to be done by resolution, including the actual amount of the fees. Council has seen this ordinance before. There have been some requests for changes. One includes fixing a typo, addressing jet skis, and as well as a change later in the ordinance regarding the use of the funds. Need to be a bit more inclusive as the type of parks that these funds can be addressed or be used for, to, for improvements for. So for instance, this is between lines 117 and 119. All revenue generated from launch fees will be placed in a restricted fund to be used for city park projects or improvements related to boating and/or parks having boating or watercraft launches. So that, I think, covers what I heard council was looking for at the meeting, where I wasn't present. That is what you have before you. There also was a discussion at the previous council meeting regarding the amount of the fines. Currently, this ordinance states $50. That hasn't changed since the previous meeting, although council indicated they wish to have that changed. Just received information today that council can set those fines as they wish to have them set per the city's contract with the state attorney. So council has the option tonight of passing this on first reading, should you wish to do so, with instructions to change the fines as you wish to have them. And if council isn't ready to make that decision tonight, what the fine should be, or wants additional information, that can be brought back at the next workshop. Again, this is a first reading, so you can move this ordinance along, that's all you're doing. It's not set in stone at this point. It would not need to start over simply by changing those amounts, because the title is not changing. So coming to a conclusion, what you would like to do to the fines is something that you can do between now and final adoption.
Okay. So it's important to clarify that whatever we adopt tonight, this is the first reading. So if there's something between now and the second reading, if we want to make any changes, we can make changes without going back to a reset.
That's right. You can make any changes, we can make any changes that council wishes to make, so long as whatever changes you make are not so substantial that it changed the title of the ordinance. And certainly, council, to this point, hasn't discussed anything outside those parameters. Title's broad, it's simply implementing fees and enforcement, providing penalties. So those can be tweaked as you see fit, without starting the process over.
Okay. All right, thank you, counselor. At this time, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to make a comment? Mr. Bibber?
Bill Bibber, 9552 Southwest. Before I do that, I just have to do a very quick thing. So I mentioned what the current nitrate level in the Rainbow River is. I just found out before I went away. It's right now at 2.8 milligrams per liter, which I believe is the highest in the state of Florida. So if anything that we can do through BMAP to get funding for removal of subject tax and hurdle would be certainly a good thing. Also, the, this issue is, as I mentioned, very contentious. The Florida Springs Council has produced an alternate BMAP program, which they are submitting to the state as an alternate to the one that the state has produced, which they feel is more realistic and more workable, and would have a better chance of getting down to the .35 milligrams per liter, which is the standard. So anybody wants to see it, I have one. Andrew, thank you for the ordinance. I looked it over, looks pretty good. I don't have near as many comments as I did on the last one. So just a couple of things, and I hope you remember, the last time I spoke on this, I had suggested a two-tiered system, one for motorized and one for non-motorized, motorized vessels, so that a battle craft would not pay the same as a person that, with a boat that can maybe hold 10, 12 people or a pontoon or so. So I hope you were able to do that. Second, in 46-102D, where it says launch fees may be waived for special events by resolution of city council. The only thing with that is I've been involved in this business for a long time. What's going to happen is you're going to have lots of people that are going to come to you asking for free use of the ramp. It might be Boy Scouts, in my own case, I did the Christmas bird council for a number of years where we used to say ramp. I think it may be a little more tedious than you want to do. I think that's something that probably the city clerk could do. I know in my own experience in state parks, we had a special card with a logo on it, that we would just give to a person, they would come to the office, they would explain what they were doing there, the clerk or whoever was there would make a decision, they would hand them a card, they put it in our window, so when the officer came by, they would see that the person that was, was waived to use it. But those are the under two small things, and I think it's pretty convenient.
Thank you, Mr. Bibber. Does anyone else like to speak? Mr. Lehman, correct? All right.
Rex Lehman, 21230 Blackett Drive, Dan Allen. I listened to the presentation last, at the workshop the other night, and I was looking at the numbers. I found that they were literally suspect, because the April numbers they were showing was $9,000 a day off of revenue, or for April, $9,000 for non-residents and $25,000 for residents, or, that's backwards. But the total was $34,000 a month, which you're looking at over 30 days, says you're going to be making over $1,000 a day. And when you look at the entire presentation of what they were paying, Dan Allen, versus what they were taking out for administration fees, I worked it out to where that's almost, almost 60 launches a day, but that's times two, so that's 120 launches in, say, eight hours or 10 hours. So that's quite a lot of traffic down there for that. So I think it's an overestimation. And my question is, what, if we get into something like this, where we are guaranteeing them so much money, what about the month of December last month, where we had a whole week where it wasn't above the 50s or the 60s? Do we have to pay for that? So that's something to consider. Now, I came from Miami, Florida, I live in Palmetto Bay, and down there, everybody had a 20 to 30-foot boat in their yard. It was as ubiquitous as a trailer is up here. And when fishing season started, Black Point Marina was not that far from my house, and they would have 300 to 400 of these giant trailers, and they had nobody to administer. They simply had a kiosk system where you went, you paid your docking fee, you put it on your dash, and if you, and then they came through and checked, if you didn't have it, you got a $200 ticket. So everybody, it was self-managing. And what I would like to suggest to you is that maybe you could do a little more research in terms of, for less than $1,000, you could probably set up two good cameras out there with high resolution to record the launches. Hire somebody per diem, per day, to go through those recordings, record the boat type and the number of launches, so you would get the, you could get the time people stayed and get better information of how many people were actually launching. And the other thing would, would be to take the kayaks out, because it was my understanding that there would be a $15 kayak fee, and somebody's, they're already paying up at the state park and Blue Run to put in, and then to come down here and say, oh, now we have to pay another $25 to take your boat out. And also, would we be interested in looking at a, since you're doing the vacation rental, part of the ordinance was the vacation rentals would buy a license to watch kayaks and boats, that they would pay a one-time fee? And so I'm, I'm trying to make it so that maybe for a very small cost, you could set up a way to...
Thank you, Mr. Lehman.
Thank you. So counsel, just keep in mind, we're talking about passing the ordinance, which gives us the right to charge a fee, and some of the details is yet to come, and some good suggestions. Anything else? Anybody else want to make any comments? Okay, nothing on Zoom?
No, sir, nothing on Zoom.
Okay. Can I have a motion to move ordinance 2022-12 be read by title only?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Taken by, by mayor. I don't believe this allows, needs discussion. So we have a motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Now I need a proposed motion to move ordinance 2022-12...
Sir, I have to read it by title.
Hmm? Oh, you have to read it, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Ordinance number 2022-12, an ordinance of the City of Dan Allen, providing for the establishment of Centennial Park Boat Ramp Launch Fees, providing that the amount of launch fees be set by resolution, providing for penalties and enforcement, providing for the use of revenue generated from the fees, providing for conflicts, codification, severability, and effective date.
Okay, I guess we should do the vote again, right? Okay, we have a motion?
Like a motion?
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. Now we have another proposed motion of ordinance 2022-12 to be approved. So counsel, since this is another vote, does this need any more further public discussion? Mr. Hand? Is this...
You've already taken public comments, so public comments...
Okay, so take care of both of them. Okay, just want to make sure. All right, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, good job. All right, now we're moving on to number nine. Resolution 2023-01, the personal manual amendment. I guess as before, Mr. Hand, you should give us a description of what this is.
Yes, sir, I'm just going to pull it up. Walk through it here. So this is the resolution prepared by staff to deal with the state of Florida's mandate regarding minimum wage and adjusting all salaries per Ms. Odom's comments at the previous meeting to avoid compression. The resolution is substantially similar to the resolution you saw at the workshop, except for the change that was made in the whereas clause, per the vice mayor's request to address the standard that this is not something that's mandated by the state of Florida, it's just something that should council decide to move forward, council be finding it in the best interest of the city to adjust all salary, salary self classifications in this manner.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment on agenda item number nine, as described by Mr. Hand? Okay, no comment? No Zoom, I have to keep reminding myself about Zoom.
No, sir, nobody on Zoom.
All right. So can we have a proposed motion to move resolution 2023-01 to be read by title only? Have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Vote? Vote? Yes, vote?
To be read.
Yeah, vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, read it by title only, I'm getting it down now.
Resolution number RES 2023-01, a resolution by the City Council of the City of Dan Allen, adopting personal manual amendments and changes to Article 10, Section 6.1, Paying Classification Plan and Providing for an Effective Date.
Thank you. So we have another proposed motion. I need a motion to move resolution 2023-01 to be approved. Do I have a motion?
I move resolution 2023-01 to be approved.
Have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Now we go to agenda item number 10. This is Resolution 2023-03, council meeting and workshop schedule. I don't know if Mr. Hand or if Ms. Leonard would go over that.
I'd be happy to.
Go ahead, I'll thank you.
Okay, I'd be happy to, counsel. This resolution that was reviewed at the last workshop simply changes the council workshop meeting dates to the first Monday of each month, from the Wednesday preceding the second Monday, where a meeting would currently be scheduled. So it's no longer floating, it's very clear that a city council workshop would be on the first Monday of each month. In addition, council meetings also would be changed, and that would be the Wednesday following that workshop. So now the meetings will be tagged to a workshop, as opposed to being tagged to a council meeting. As for other things the resolution does, it just creates a system for individuals who wish to place items on the workshop agenda, as well as the council agenda and deadlines, to get that information into the city clerk.
Okay, very good. Do we have any public comment on agenda item number 10? No public comment? Zoom?
No, sir.
All right, we have, can I have a proposed motion of Resolution 2023-03 to be read by title, title only?
I propose the Resolution 2023-03 be read by title only?
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We want a discussion?
None on this, it's just going to be read by title only?
Oh, okay.
Okay, passes unanimous. Ms. Leonard, please read it.
Resolution number RES 2023-03, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Dan Allen, setting forth the time and place of its meetings, providing for an effective date.
Excellent. All right, we're wading through this.
I have a question. Is that going to start with February?
When is this?
Effective March 1st. Thank you.
I'll just say it here.
Got it.
Okay, now we have to move to approve it. We, I need a motion to approve Resolution 2023-03. Do I have a motion and a second?
Did we move through the discussion part already?
After a motion and a second, then it's, then discussion comes. Just because you make a motion and a second doesn't mean you're approving it, it means you're just putting it up for discussion.
Got it.
If you want to kill it, if there's no motion and a second, it dies. So do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, now we get to discussion. All right, is there a discussion on this motion?
Just wanted to confirm that we're staying with the 5:30 time.
Hmm?
I just want to confirm that we're staying with the 5:30 time.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Good with that. I think...
All right. Me?
My worry is if we make it at five, nine o'clock is still going to be the witching, the be witching hour. So I think when we see nine o'clock, that's when we try to wrap it up. Okay, any further discussion?
I have still discussion. And I know this may sound trivial. First of all, overall, I think this is perfect. My only request, and I'm trying to read into this change, that we may have this covered, but I want to make sure. On the workshop, I have no problem with any of that. The meeting, and I raise this question and I will use as an example, this meeting agenda we had tonight. If you look at the agenda, items three, four, five, and six were not previously discussed at workshop. I would request that these items, if they're on the agenda, be after items seven, eight, nine, and 10, which were discussed at workshop. And my point being, we brought up all this stuff at workshop. To me, that should be the first thing on the agenda and it should be voted that way. Then if there are other business, kind of like old business, then new business will be everything that wasn't discussed at a workshop. Now, I've discussed this with staff, a couple of staff, because I understand the question when we have visitors come in, that we want to put them first and I get that, okay? And, but I still come back to, we're doing this, the citizens should understand that the business we're going to bring up first is what's been brought up. And if we got new business, we put it at the end. And I have two thoughts. One is not bringing this other stuff in here to a regular meeting. Okay, make sure it all goes through a workshop first. And if possible, do it that way. Or if like this guy Rob, he was supposed to be here at workshop and we had to move it to tonight because he couldn't make it, kind of an exception, that again, he's on here, but put him at the end and just tell him, look, we got some business to take care of, you don't need to be here at 5:30, maybe here at 6:00, 6:15. And again, I'm just, to me, coming from the business world, it seems to me if we put a structure to this, that okay, workshop, we cover all this stuff. And then we come to the meeting and we'll vote on some of this or a lot of it, that it be handled first and get it out of the way. It's kind of like old business. And then the other stuff that we end up discussing at a meeting come later because it's a meeting or try to limit what is this new information and say, look, if we haven't discussed this at workshop, we're not even going to discuss it. And again, I see that as being a two-fold thing and that one, probably going to make our workshop meetings longer, but it will make our meetings a whole lot shorter. And that's just, that's just my thought. Overall, I think things are better.
Any comments?
I think that makes a lot of sense. I do too, and I especially like the fact about the part that we come in, we vote what went on at the workshop and that the meetings are significantly shorter than the workshop when we're talking it all out. I wouldn't be opposed to seeing some of these things show up on a workshop as opposed to being discussed at a meeting. So I'm on board with all points. But Jam has her hand up.
My comment on this is, it seems like it's, how can you argue with that? Whatever's been discussed first should be voted on first. But when you're dealing with individuals that are driving here to, to interact with us, to, we know, like right now, this meeting is already at the two hour 15 minute mark, right? So for Rob Balms or anybody who's coming, to expect them to sit here, that, that's a little tough. I know when I go to the county commissioners, and I believe if you as council members went to the county commissioners and you let them know you were there as a representative of Dunellen, they would put you near the front of the meeting to allow you to speak and leave. It's just, it's a courtesy. It's a standard practice. And as far as, again, trying to decide what we're going to put on the next meeting, now we have a big gap between the meetings and the idea that if you haven't discussed it at a workshop, you shouldn't put it on the regular meeting. A lot of things go on in a week. So I get it, I get it, but it's, it's just, it's just not, it's not neighborly to have someone who wants to come and speak to us that they may have to wait till 8:30 or whatever to speak to us. It's just, it's not...
Can I address that? What if we told them, we would suspect that the time of their presentation would be one hour into the meeting, they could go and have dinner and then come here late. I mean, they don't, nothing within our protocol says they have to be here when our meeting starts.
Well, let's walk through that. Rob Balms has city hours, right? So he works from eight to five, whatever it is. So he probably leaves a little early and drives over here. So if you said to Rob, okay, we've got you scheduled for eight o'clock tonight, so he's going to get off, come here and then have to wait till eight o'clock at night to go to, you know, Hardee's Restaurant and kill some time, whatever. I'm just, I'm just saying, it's, it's very much a standard when people come as, are willing to take the trouble of coming to us and speak to us in person to make them wait to, if they're willing to come in that much trouble, it's, it's just not how it's done. It's not done that way.
I understand what you're saying, because that's being hurried. Again, when somebody comes to a meeting, they should be first. But what I'm really saying here is the litter task force, the architectural drawing, police station, and Rob should have all come up to a workshop and shouldn't have been on this at the time. That's my first point. Now, if we have somebody come, then I have nothing about putting them on first, okay? Because I agree with you. But what I'm saying is those things to me, and Rob really was in workshop, had to change it, okay? But I hate to say this, but maybe he should have just come to the next workshop, why didn't he speak?
Well, if you're, if you're proposing that all presentations and personal presentations should all be focused on the workshop.
That's really what I'm saying.
Then that's, that's workable, but no, we had a four-hour workshop.
Oh, I know, and that's, that's what this is fixing to do is, and the meetings are all be short, but the workshops could go way long unless we limit the agenda to a certain number of things and, and the first 10, 11 items on the agenda, buddy, that's the end of it. You know, we go to the next meeting.
I'd like to comment, that's the kind of what, the way City of Williston runs their workshops and meetings. And what it does, it shortens their meetings to an hour and a half.
What?
Hammer down, out, hour and a half. Check on, because I have, and I've talked to Jackie up there. I should rephrase that.
We need to hold like the workshops off unless we limit the agenda.
Jackie's the city administrator, Jackie Gorman. I think our secretary, Ms. Smith, has been trying to get a word in edgeline.
Yes, Ms. Smith, I'm sorry.
I know there are exceptions to every rule. The primary one for me being in the next few months, you're going to have your auditor here giving your annual report. Those are done on Mondays, not at workshops, because counsel has to accept that audit report. He does have a two-hour drive. Again, it's, it's completely up to counsel where you place somebody on the agenda, but just, you know, as far as courtesy and a two-hour drive, depending on what would be on the meeting. But again, it's, it's counsel's pleasure. The auditor serves at your pleasure. But I just wanted to bring that up.
To your point, though, that would be presented to you at the workshop so that you would know the auditor was coming that Monday at that meeting.
Yes.
So you would be able to make that determination where you wanted staff to put the auditor on the agenda.
Sure.
Prior to the agenda being...
That's high priority, what you're talking about.
So I guess, I agree 100%. I mean, that was my world, auditing, accounting, and all like this. But again, if somebody's driving that far, clearly when they're on the agenda, the ones that have to travel as far as need to be first. Sorry, Andrew, you're just an exception, okay? But, but what I'm really trying to get to, and again, I get back, I didn't know that's what Williston was doing, but if we took all of these things and said, okay, let's put the items that have been discussed at workshop on here. Now, there's going to be a time when something comes up, we'll say like this C2C deal tonight. I mean, we wouldn't have discussed it at a workshop, and this is probably the only time we could have discussed it, so we got to put it on the meeting agenda. But these other things to me, that when I saw them, I was like, gosh, these really shouldn't have been on a workshop so we could get a full discussion of all this stuff. I try to rein it to a meeting, but that begins. That's the point I'm really getting at, not what priority comes in, because when you get to the meeting, you're just covering everything you want to do at a workshop. But I totally agree with you, Bill, when we have a guest, they need to be first. But maybe they need to come to a workshop.
So, so right now, the way it is, we can actually have presentations at both workshops and meetings.
Yes, sir, but I mean, we do try to make all presentations workshop material. I mean, we do our very best to provide workshop dates for people when they're coming to do presentations.
So to Mr. Vice Mayor Dunn's point is always is never always and never is never.
Correct.
Right.
Right? So right off the bat, you're going to have someone who can't come to the workshop that has something that we really need to hear. And that if we go with a hard rule, I'm sorry, you can't make a presentation other than a workshop, then we may be shooting ourselves in the foot. You know, when you just say you just can't do that, Mandy says, I'm sorry, you'll have to wait another 30 days, it might be something we need to hear. So I would, I would, I'd feel uneasy to just, I know what we're trying to do and I feel good about trying that, but I would feel uncomfortable eliminating any possibility. For instance, Chief tonight, he's up early because he had a conflict in his schedule. He asked if he could be up a little further. Usually we would have Mr. Balms go before Chief as a, as being neighborly to Mr. Balms. We wouldn't have him sit there. But...
And I brought up the litter task force and in retrospect, I maybe should have geared that toward a workshop, but by the time I had spoken with the chief, he had a guest coming from out of the area and indicated that today would be the better date for him. But I, I agree concentrating things to the workshop when we can, limiting the number to, to limit the length of the meeting is a, is a solid plan.
I think to your point again, Vice Mayor, if staff is directed to try to channel as much as they can into the workshop and give them the wiggle room they need, that when someone says, I just can't make it on that...
No, no, I totally get it. Like if one of our county commissioners wants to come and they can't come on Monday, and they can only come on Wednesday or vice versa, then yeah, you got to let them do what you got to do. I'm not saying this is absolute black and white, but let's, let me try to work to that.
Our Commissioner Bryant, we'd like to put you earlier on the agenda, but since we have all this new, this other, we're going to put you in number 15.
No, no, I get that. I thought we got that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew, but the way that this resolution is written, counsel would really have the ability to make these decisions because when it comes to the council meeting and anyone that wants to present at a council meeting, they would have to make their request to the city clerk, excuse me, by noon time on the day of the workshop. So we would be presenting to you anyone that wanted to come to the council meeting and you could determine at that time where on the agenda you wanted them...
Sure. That's the way I read this. When you pointed that out, when I went back and read this, that's exactly, it's like, you know, substitute and adjustment to priority and times, sensitive ladder, you know, that makes sense.
So Mr. Hand, it sounds like a good catch-up from Michelle's part. It seems like Vice Mayor's concerns may be addressed where counsel can, can deal with that through this resolution.
That's the way we manage a resolution, so that there is that flexibility and that counsel will hear what would be coming before them at the meeting, at the workshop. And then counsel can set priorities and say, well, we're looking pretty full for the meeting. We can schedule this individual perhaps for the next workshop or for a future meeting and provide direction at that point in time.
Right.
So, yeah, there's a lot of discretion there on, on counsel's part and flexibility.
So good, we got a clarification, right? All right, so this happens to me sometimes when we get into extended discussion, where were we? Okay. So this, we were just discussing what, were we into the motion discussion phase? Where were we?
Yes, you have a motion and a second on the table.
To move the resolution to be approved?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we've had a motion, we've had a second, we've had discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. So we are now at number 11, council liaison reports and comments. Ms. Covich, we usually start with you.
Nothing to report today.
Okay. Ms. Mendoka?
I just reiterate that I plan to be here for city hall office hours on the 26th from 12:30 to 5:00. That's all I have.
All right. Vice Mayor?
I have nothing to report.
All right, hold on a second. I had a couple, just a couple announcements that I wanted to make. Okay. Counsel, as you know, counsel person Tim Inskey is sick and he will not be able to attend the Chamber of Commerce meeting tomorrow evening. And he's asked for someone to step up and meet with the Chamber of Commerce. Anybody willing to, to meet with the Chamber?
Time is set?
It's either six or seven o'clock.
I believe it's six.
Six?
I believe so, yeah.
And what they have suggested to me, they, they would like it from time to time if different counsel members would come so they kind of get an idea. They just had me for about a year and a half, I think. They were kind of tired of seeing me, maybe.
I would go tomorrow.
Okay.
You said it's tomorrow, right?
Correct.
I'll, I'll check the time with them.
Okay. I did say already that sometimes we can get hung up on an item and we spent 38 minutes discussing the boat ramp last time. One thing I would suggest, and this is my last suggestion, is after these meetings are over, wait a day or two and then go back and listen to portions of the meeting that you're interested in. I mean, I was absolutely amazed when I went back and listened to the last meeting portions of it, things that I was actually hearing for the first time. I mean, as we're thinking about the agenda and what we're going to say next and this and that, you get distracted. I was amazed, it was almost like I was listening to a separate meeting. Also, keep in mind that Julie and Michelle do put a lot of time into the minutes. And the minutes are actually very good on refreshing where you have, so take, take the time to read that. And just, Counselwoman Mendoka, you did ask for a further explanation of Troy's comments. You did receive a response from Mandy explaining it, and then you just heard Troy's explanation of it. Are you satisfied? Because you had said at the last meeting you wanted to have further information on that. And I'm asking this question because this has been a great meeting and I hope it doesn't get us into a thorny situation by me asking, but you did say you would like to have more information on that.
Yeah, I think what I was trying to clarify was at the time that the discussion occurred between you and Troy, I felt...
I felt as though there was a suggestion that maybe he had been less than transparent, and I think that he, that wasn't clarified tonight, but he clarified something else that he said. I'm okay with it.
All right, I don't plan to push it, my interpretation of it. And I'm satisfied with what Troy has said.
Can I just ask, Troy, are you satisfied with how you've been able to express yourself after the exchange? Do you feel you provided clarity?
You're in a good mood.
Okay, with that, put that to bed. City attorney comments?
Yes, council, I just have one thing, and I'm not looking to launch a discussion, but on the boat ramp launch ordinance, I know there was that discussion on enforcement and what the fines would be. At this point, certainly that can be a discussion to be had by council at the workshop, I would anticipate that. In the interim, is there anything that you're looking for from me or staff to bring back? Any suggested fines or so forth? I know the chief is not present, but is there any feedback you want from staff on enforcement? Or is that just something that you want to take up as a discussion at the next workshop? Should you so choose to do so?
I would take a combination of all of the above where we can really dig in and read this and make our own private recommendations. And then when it comes back at the workshop, because we really need to go through this.
Didn't the chief say that he's learned that it doesn't have to be fifty bucks, it could be something else?
Exactly, that's what I was stating earlier, and I know there was some interest in a possibility of a tier sort of setup. So what I can do in, in advance of the meeting, and that's just what I'm asking for, is I can prepare some language. Just leave the blanks. And I can, I can let chief know, you know, council may be looking for some suggestions, that's what those amounts may be. And I can prepare the language, and so it's ready for you to see at the actual workshop. And then if you want to modify a portion of it, it'll be quick to insert it and have it ready for the meeting.
I would like that, if you could do that, because again, we kind of had a discussion before, but to me, fifty dollars wasn't enough. But again, maybe saying two fifty, but maybe starting off with, okay, first fine's a hundred bucks, and then we go to something else on fine two and three and decide what we're going to do. If somebody abuses it, I don't mind finding them two hundred fifty dollars. But if it's the first time with hands, you know, don't kill them. But I did think fifty dollars, you know, we're not charging twenty-five or fifteen. You know, they might just say, anyway, I'll just pay the ticket.
I agree, I agree. I'll do that then, prepare the language and have that.
Chief, there's just not enough difference between a fifty-dollar fine and a fifteen-dollar fee. It's just, you know, it's enough, I'll take my chances, and if I get busted, I pay fifty, right?
Right.
All right, sir, that's all I have.
Okay, anything on Zoom or anything that we need to do?
No, sir.
Okay, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn the meeting.
A second.
Thank you very much. All right.
No, four, no, four, I'm sorry. You need to. Oh, you're on a wonderful week. I'm going to be checking out.